Stay September the third at 6:30 PM. If you would, please silence your phones and any other electronic devices at this time. Please stand for the prayer by our Plenipendiatist Commissioner, Mr. Josh Dano.
Josh.
I mean Josh Ward. And also our pledge of allegiance by Councilman George.
Hey, with all we thank you tonight for your many blessings that you blessed to negotiate with, and we pray tonight that you bless this council meeting or the decisions that are made that affect all the citizens of this city. Thank you for our elected officials. We thank you for all of our first responders. We pray to have protection around us, now home in the city, in the name of Jesus. We pray.
Please join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh Ward. I apologize about that. I was Josh Dano thought I was putting him on the spot for a moment. He turned red. Thank you, Councilman George. And also if we could just have a moment of silence, I lost and my fellow classmates, we lost one of our classmates this past week, and please keep her little son and her precious mother and all of us classmates and her family in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. That brings us to agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy?
Yes, sir. I just need to add one additional announcement to the announcements.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition announcement?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Gillette. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shancy.
Farmer's Market will be September fourteenth, starting at eight AM at the former San Antonio Mall property. Casey Thirsty will be on that same property September twenty-sixth, starting at eleven AM. The City of Goche's Cruisin' Through the Decades event will be October sixth, starting at twelve PM. Outdoor Moon Night featuring Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles Mutant Mammoth will be October eighteenth, starting at six thirty PM at the City of Goche Sports Fest. The Goche Mallet and Music Festival will be October nineteenth from nine AM until six PM at the former San Antonio River Mall property. And I would also like to announce the City of Goche's Prosperity Partners, a business network for the advancement of Goche's, having its kickoff meeting on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four at nine AM, featuring a city update by Mayor Casey Vaughn. It is free to join. It is for Goche businesses only. It's great networking and important information sharing. We'd like you on a business in Goche. We would like to see you attend Prosperity Partners. It goes with quarterly, and I think it will provide you, we're trying to get our stakeholders together and provide important information that we think will help them prosper.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda. It's Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, so we have with us Rebecca Morrow here with us. If you'll come to the front so you can receive the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor and the city council of the City of Goche, Mississippi. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old. And one in two hundred and eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. And whereas forty-six children per day or sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety children per year are diagnosed with cancer in the U.S. And whereas eighty percent of children, childhood cancer patients, are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease, whereas two-thirds of children, cancer patients, will have chronic health conditions as a result of the treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas in the last thirty years, only six new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. Whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And now therefore, I, Casey Vaughn, and the City Council of Goche, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and twenty-four as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And witness whereof, I herein to set my hand in causes still of the City of Goche, Mississippi, to be affixed on this the third day of September two thousand and twenty-four. Mayor Casey Vaughn. Yeah, and Rebecca, she's going to share little words with us, tell us a little bit this afternoon.
So I'm a childhood cancer survivor myself. I had leukemia when I was twelve years old in nineteen ninety-six, so you could do the math and figure out how old I am. And I've been a volunteer with the St. Aldrich Foundation for childhood cancer research for twelve years now. And I love them. They're almost all volunteer-driven, and what we do is we raise money for childhood cancer research so that we can find treatments that will kill the cancer and not the kid. What we're doing in September, and we have nine cities on the coast out of twelve that are doing proclamations this month, is we're just drowning the coast in gold to show the families here, and there's a lot of them on the coast, that we are behind them and their kids that are fighting this horrible disease. So by putting a gold ribbon on your business or on your home, it shows these families that you support them and that you care about their kids. So this proclamation is more than just a piece of paper to these families. It shows them that the coast is really involved in their lives. So thank you so much, and let's keep fighting the fight. We have a big event September twenty-first at Jones Park in Gulfport, where we'll have live music, food, head shaving, ponytail donations, the whole nine yards, and we would love to see all of you there, it's free and open to the public. So thank you so much again, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rebecca. I just want to echo, just stay involved in your community. We have children here who have cancer. We have families that have lost their child to cancer in our city and in our sister cities throughout the whole state. So stay involved and get active and support organizations who support anybody that has cancer or any organization that will help somebody in our community, because volunteerism, people are not wanting to volunteer like they used to decades ago, and more volunteerism is needed to make a community a community. So thank you all for coming. Thank you for speaking, Rebecca.
Well, Mayor Bass of Long Beach is shaving his head, so I don't know. But I shaved mine three years ago, so just saying, I'll shave mine and you'll shave yours.
I'll shave yours.
Rubbing out on the side, so. But no, come see Mayor Bass get his head shaved, because it's going to be hilarious.
Okay, and we'll see you on that show, Rebecca. So if I come back with a shake, you will know Rebecca won the challenge between me and.
I'll donate a bunch of dollars if he does it.
Oh, so now they're rapping me out for money.
The importance of shaving your head for these kids. So like I said, I was twelve, and I was a girl, and starting middle school. Kids are mean, so it kind of shows these other kids, like I was bullied a lot and had cancer, so I was battling those two things. So coming out and shaving your head or not shaving your head or just showing up at the event and playing games with these kids, I mean, it shows them that they're not alone and that it doesn't matter that you're bald, you know, that it's just hair, it'll grow back. So it's something that we do that's kind of fun and really engages the entire community. So I hope you guys can come out, even if you don't want to shave your head, it's fine, just come out.
September twenty-first, Jones Pavilion in Gulfport.
I'll email those flyers.
I'll ask Reverend Blaine to stab me to the prayer list. If you can, stand with us, we'll get the council and the city manager and attorney and we'll. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, and have safe travels back home. That brings us to business agenda item number one. Conduct a public hearing regarding the municipal budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five by our city manager, Ms. Paula Shancy.
Okay. This is a public hearing on the public budget, which the board must adopt by September fifteenth. To start with our budget calendar, we had a work session on August twenty-second. We have the public hearing, of course, tonight, September third, and the board will adopt the budget on September fifteenth. The current mileage rate in the City of Goche currently, the point one four, is forty-three mils. It includes thirty-three point eighty-nine mils per general fund, which includes two-point-eight-oh mils dedicated to public safety. Eight point one-one mils is debt service and one mil is collaborative. The proposed added war and tax rate for the upcoming year is there is no mileage increase. However, you'll see on here, the two thousand and twenty-four mil value to the city was a hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and two dollars, but the two thousand and twenty-five mil value to the city was a hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars. So it went down a little bit due to personal property and the over sixty-five home state exemption was the cause of it going down. The proposed projected revenues this year are twelve million six hundred and twenty-two dollars. The proposed budget expenditures are thirteen million seven hundred and eleven thousand four hundred dollars. The focus of the general fund budget is foundations required to spur economic development, improvements to make Goche competitive in the development and workforce marketplace, improvement of the quality of life for Goche citizens, to improve city services and standard recreation activities, continuation and expansion of events that showcase the city as a vibrant community and bring in non-residential visitors, promotion of the city in order to encourage sales tax revenue, and address underschaffing and personnel retention as a professional and dedicated workforce that is perilous, the setting the foundation requiring further appeal to developers. On this pie chart here, it basically shows the breakdown of the percentage of the revenue where they're spending our money. So fifty-seven is what thirty-one percent of public, of other funds for next year are going towards public safety. Thirteen point seventy-four percent goes to administrative departments. Six point two-three percent goes to debt service. Seven point nine-six percent goes to general expense. Eight point eight-seven percent goes to general maintenance, and five point eight-nine percent for recreation. This is the two thousand and twenty-five Gulf Coast mileage rate. And as you can see, loss points at sixty-three point two-one mils, capacity levels at fifty-four point five-oh, Goche is forty-three mils, and Ocean Springs is twenty-eight point nine-two mils. So Goche is the second to lowest in mileage rate of the four cities within Jackson County. Included in this FY two thousand and twenty-five budget is a revised pay scale and set plan for police and fire, a court software package, engineering for armed projects, abatements, increases in insurance, fuel, and electricity, computer replacement, and street skate and road maintenance. That was the general fund. Now this is the utilities. The minimum bill for residential customers excluding garbage, based on forty thousand gallons, will increase to sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. The reason for that increase is the City of Goche collects your sewer, and it provides you water. But once that sewer is collected, there is statute that created a regional wastewater authority, which is Jackson County Utility Authority. We have to send that sewer to the Jackson County Utility Authority, and they have to treat it, and we have to pay them to treat it. So this year, what we have to pay them went up by six point four percent with a total increase of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. So basically what that is, is it's just a pass-through of what we're having to pay Jackson County Utility Authority to treat that sewer, is just a pass-through of the cost to our customers. So a minimum bill for water and sewer will increase by a dollar and twenty-nine cents. So it was, I think, sixty-three something, and it's going to be sixty-four seventy-four. Garbage tax. The city had, last time the city went out for bids for garbage was in two thousand and eighteen. As you all know, that was a much different economic time in two thousand and eighteen. They were good for five years, six years. So the city was required this year to go out for proposals for garbage. They chose two companies to negotiate with, and we got it down as low as we could possibly get it, but the cost increase is still ten dollars per month per household. The difference here is, is recycling will no longer, as of October the seventh, be automatic. The reason is because only twenty percent of the residents were recycling. Most of what goes in that bin, they end up getting recycled. Basically, out of all the prescriptions, I mean, by all the accounts is a empty cargo box from Amazon. And if it's wet, then it can't be recycled. So what we decided to do was, if the resident wants recycling, you can still have it, you just have to arrange for it directly with waste program. So if you want to continue to recycle, it'll be what's called a subscription service. So the county, the mayor wasn't counsel with this is because it would have been a whole lot more than ten dollars more a month if we had not. Recycling is terribly expensive. So your garbage will go up from twenty-one dollars a month to thirty-one dollars a month. The good news is, it is a six-year contract, and it cannot be increased for the next six years.
We'll have public questions in a moment.
Proposed residential utility rate comparison. Minimum bill for water is currently twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Per additional thousand gallons is nine dollars and ten cents. The water is not changing, as you can see if you go to two thousand and twenty-five across, the water remains twenty-seven thirty minimum bill, and per thousand gallons additional is nine dollars and ten cents. Sewer, the minimum for three thousand gallons is sixteen oh five. That also is not changing. Per additional thousand gallons is five dollars and thirty-five cents. That also is not changing. The wastewater sewer treatment, for a minimum bill, you're currently paying twenty dollars and ten cents per additional thousand gallons at six dollars and seventy cents. You can see here that that's what is increasing. That's what I explained to you was JCUA, who we have to pay to treat your sewer. So the minimum bill will go from twenty dollars and ten cents to twenty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents to treat the sewer. Per additional thousand gallons will go from six seventy to seven dollars and thirteen cents. And all that is, is just a pass-through of the forty-three cents per thousand gallons that went up on us. So your minimum water and sewer bill in two thousand and twenty-four was sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Your minimum water sewer bill in two thousand and twenty-five will be sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Your garbage was twenty-one dollars in two thousand and twenty-four, will be thirty-one dollars in two thousand and twenty-five. So your minimum bill will go from, which has water, sewer, wastewater or sewer treatment, and garbage, all in one bill, it will go from eighty-four dollars and forty-five cents to ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents. And then we have the same comparison on the commercial. And as you can see, everything stays the same, as you get down to the wastewater treatment, and it increases by the same increment, so is the garbage. So a minimum bill for commercial will go from ninety-three seventy-five to a hundred and five dollars and four cents. Okay, that's it. Anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
My question is, is there a cost?
Take your name and address for the public hearing.
She's in the twenty-seven twelve county in Tulsa. Is there a cost for recycling?
Yes, there will be a cost. If you want recycling, it'll depend on whether you want the bin or whether you want the cart, and probably on how often you want the cart emptied. But that can all be arranged directly with waste program.
Delmore makes me twenty-two whiskey. I just want to know, is there anything you could do for the late charges that that costs a lot, but a lot of people have problems paying their bills? Is anybody going to help with the late charges? All the water, I mean, that's just a lot to pay when you're running on this thing coming, you know, that's a concern.
Okay, go ahead with that, please. Ma'am?
I've always had a question about recycling. It seems to, from what I understand, in this country, we start about seven percent of the stuff that we put in recycling. I'm just wondering, if we just designated the item that we recycle, say we're only going to do boxes, or we're only going to do plastic, then maybe it would make it recyclable, because I was told that they just bundle it. Now, once something is bundled, it's not recyclable. I mean, I know that. You know, they told me they both maybe they separate, but they don't. Oh, that's stupid. So can we maybe, you know, the city decide for us, do we do cans? Do we do plastic? Do we do?
The only issue with that is, when twenty percent of the people are using recycling, and most of that is not even getting recycled for the kind of events, right? They price it like six thousand, all six thousand five hundred households are going to recycle. So that, in other words, if I'm not recycling, and I don't recycle, I'm paid, and I have to, whether I do or not, and the cost, the cost of everybody to go up, you know, from a recycling standpoint, the way that I explained it to you was, if you have a managed jar, and you put it in there as plastic, and you put it in there, if it's not completely washed out and dried, it doesn't get recycled. You got a pizza box, and it's got a piece of cheese left on it, it's not recyclable. And by the time they finished telling me what wasn't recyclable, there was very little left. All that came up was was a empty ambergris box, a little, really. Yeah, I mean, it just, it's, it's very expensive to recycle, and it's very restricted what can be recycled. But I may have a list of what they will accept if you want to recycle.
Yeah, I was told that maybe we could just call it one thing, and then everybody, then maybe, I don't know, the city would get off, get some of that for.
No, no, no.
And the rate was astronomical. When I tell you, well, if it's contaminated, like Ms. Shancy, if it is, if somebody was to put one thing in that bin, if it had still soda left in a can, it's all contaminated, everything in that whole thing that touched it, they have to send it all to the landfill, and none of it gets recycled.
We would basically take it off of certain classes. If you don't take it off, that's it.
That's right.
Basically, paying for recycling, which stuff is not getting recycled.
Right.
Any other?
Charles Moore, nineteen twenty whiskey.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Charles Moore, nineteen twenty whiskey. Okay, how long? Nine and five hours, but that's pretty quick. I'll give you whatever you want.
And the water's not going up.
I mean, from nine to four, whatever.
The overall utility is what you're asking. The dollar?
Your overall utility bill?
Yes.
Yes. The water is not increasing, the sewer is not increasing.
So what the nine and four dollars was?
Hold on, I don't get that too. Okay, your minimum bill right now is eighty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Okay, but that includes your water, your sewer, your treatment of your sewer, and your garbage.
Right.
So that's currently eighty-four forty-five. Your minimum bill, starting October, in October, will be ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents. And what that includes is the ten dollars garbage is going up.
Right.
And the.
Dollar twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine cents, or whatever it is, that the treatment of the sewer is going up. That's what counts for that.
So. How long you pay, you pay it as nine and four dollars, six years?
Well, no, the garbage is going to stay the same for six years. So thirty-one dollars is, it's going to go up ten dollars this year, but it's going to stay that way for six years.
Okay.
On the wastewater treatment, it, it can go up or it can go down. If next year, when they estimate our flow, it goes back down, then we'll adjust the thing back down. If it goes up, then we'll adjust it. We adjust it just so we can recoup to pay them. That's basically what it is. So we can go up or down, depending on our percentage of the flow sent to them, depending on their budget, depends on a lot of factors. But it, it used to be a million dollars a year. Now it's three point something million dollars a year, so it's gone up.
Oh, JCUA. Matt, was your question related to the budget? If not, okay. State your name.
Nineteen twenty-nine, we're on a being, Goche, Mississippi. Understanding fully pass-through, Charlie, from the garbage collection this year, just asking, is it fully pass-through? Because I know last year, we had the water increase, and that was an increase, but then we transferred over six figures from water collections into general fund. So I'm just making sure that we're not transferring back into general fund for collections. Now, from the budget that's printed, so I'm just asking.
So.
My question is.
I understand what you're asking.
Okay.
So the way, but it doesn't, you're not just talking about the garbage. So the way it works is, in municipal government, as opposed to county government, that water and sewer and utility has got to be self-sustaining, and it's like got a law built in between that and the general fund. However, there are people that are paid for out of the general fund that work utility and utilities. So there are things that we do out of general fund that works in utilities. What that is, is a transfer in to make sure that what's working, what is utilities, is all billed to utility. That's all that is. It's just a transfer in to recoup that portion of the general fund that's being used on utilities. That's what that is. But as far as the garbage specifically that you asked for, what that is, that thirty-one dollars is not just your garbage rate, it's also solid waste rate. For example, if you have a storm, no, a storm that comes through here, we have a storm that comes through here, and it's a tropical storm, or it has debris, or whatever, and we have to go pay and go out and pick it up.
Sure.
That's what, that is also included in there.
So I guess if I could revise, do we anticipate general fund transfers, really increasing collections on the garbage side?
No, not even different than what has been done in every other year. I think it's almost the same amount every year.
Okay, okay. It was just a measurable increase for the water last year. Right, and I understand where you're coming from.
Well, and just to clarify, we did not have any rate increase last year.
I understood that you transfer from collections to general funds substantially increased.
Well, part of that is also roadways and drainage is not in the enterprise fund. It is actually part of the general fund. But those utilities, employees, and H2O, and prior was Clearwater, would do that, so we would have to designate those funds that are utilized for that specific portion and transfer out of enterprise to the general fund.
Right, and I guess I should have started by managing the law for the water. But the question is, when someone would look, line by line, they appear a certain way.
Right.
Right, and so I'm just making clarity on the issue.
Well, did I answer your question?
Yes. Obviously, we can't publish a budgetary line item by number budget. That would be a big spend on the city right here. Just, I was just bringing the question of the transfers from one account to the other, because it did grow larger last year. Now, we have the increase. Were we anticipating that this year? If the answer is no, the answer is no, and that brings.
Same, it will remain the same.
Sure, I get that. And I was speaking, how would that account into general fund? Right, and so we're saying that we're going to write the same there, that's perfect. And that brings some clarity to the increase from last year. So that was my question, did we anticipate having the same? The answer is no, the answer is no. Thank you, city manager, thank you, all of you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. An awesome drive-by. You and our city staff and our comptroller once again. You and our city staff and our comptroller once again, and we've been doing those transfers for decades in Goche. We're glad Mr. Johnson asked about them, so everybody knows they've been going on, and our audits are a hundred percent clean.
That's perfect, right there. Now, leave it there.
Okay, that brings us to business agenda item number, that closed the public hearing, and we will vote on the budget next Tuesday at six P M. here at Goche City Hall. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Adoption of resolution fixing the municipal tax levy for F Y twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Ms. Shantsey.
Uh, yes, this just fixes your tax levy for the next budget year.
Thank you. Any public comments on the tax levy business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution fixing the municipal tax levy for F Y twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman George.
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
For clarification, it's not going up. It stayed the same as it was last year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Eldon?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman George. Um, Councilman College, second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our business agenda item number three. Resolution declaring the city's intention to A, issue and sell the go-bonds, B, issue and sell the city bond to municipal development bank, and/or C, enter into the loan with Mississippi Development Bank to borrow money from the bank, all in a total aggregate principal amount, not to exceed two million dollars by City Manager Ms. Pollyancy.
Yes, so this is a general fund bond, and what it will be used for is work on the mall property, tear down the awning, tear down the concrete out, take those stone things off. It'll also be used to purchase property in conjunction with the mall property. And we also have included lighting on, getting rid of the little decorative, whatever lights, and putting some back those big lights that shed a little more light on Highway ninety.
All right.
Which will not only get better light, but it will also save money on the poles. So that's basically what this is.
And fixtures.
And fixtures. And this is just the first step in the process. Still got a lot of steps left to go, but this is the first thing you have to do to start the wheel start.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. We have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution declaring the city's intention to A, issue and sell the go-bonds, B, issue and sell the city bond to Mississippi Development Bank, and/or C, enter into the loan with Mississippi Development Bank to borrow money for, from the bank, all in a total aggregate principal amount, not, of not to exceed two million dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman George.
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, this will be the development of our, um, City Hall, am I correct?
No, sir. This is to, remember, under the bail agreement, you have to tear down the awning. And that's attached to their roof.
Gotcha.
And by October of twenty twenty-five. You've got a few more years, but eventually, you're gonna have to tear up that concrete and those precast stone walls. All it's gonna do is go up in price. So once you take all that down and clean it up, number two is gonna look a whole lot better. Then that's what activates the belt coming to go out and get proposals or whatever to redo their back entrance, because it's boiling up right now from where the old mall used to be. So that's part of it. The other part is to purchase property that's only buried in the little office that's right there that wasn't part of the overall mall property, but it's only in conjunction with it. So that's to purchase that property. And then the other is the lights on Highway ninety, you know, instead of the black lights.
Black. Exactly.
And what we got a quote years ago is to go back and put in the lights that give off more light that are through singing river power, I'm sorry, rather than.
Special lights.
Special lights. And also brighten up your city.
Right. No more questions.
Shut up, thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
Did you have the opportunity to consider whether or not we could extend those lights all the way to the golf course?
I did, but I've got to get with them on it because it had, they are, you know, they're doing that sidewalk all the way to.
That's on the north side of the highway. Yeah, but they're wired.
But they are also lighting it, and they're also putting lights there. So I just need to make sure.
Putting lights where?
On the highway.
On the sidewalk. On the side of the sidewalk. And I just gotta make sure, see what kind of lights, I don't, that's all I know, but I haven't seen the plan. So I gotta get with them to make sure and then get a quote from singing river that's updated, yeah.
I would really like to see them do that for the fact that you've got businesses from here to the golf course entrance. That if we can put lights for the rest of the businesses down through here, we ought to be able to have it for them too. That's all.
Councilman College?
I have no comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No questions.
Councilman Eldon?
No comment.
Do we have a motion, um, do we have, um, we have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Resolution declaring the city's intention to A, issue combined water and sewer city revenue bonds, B, issue and sell the city revenue bond to the Mississippi Development Bank, and/or C, enter into a loan with Mississippi Development Bank to borrow money from the bank, all in the total aggregate principal amount, not, of not to exceed five million, three hundred thousand dollars by City Manager Ms. Shantsey.
Yes, ma'am, this is from, it's a revenue bond. It's going to be paid from infrastructure monies, they have funds. What this is for is, the bids came back on the water treatment plant in South Goche. They're gonna award them in November. It takes another two point one million dollars that we're short to get that actually to construction. You've got the Lark plant, which is getting up and, it's moving quickly through EPA. You're two point three million dollars short on that particular project. We got a match waiver, but it's still, you can't build that plant for two point five. So that's two point three million dollars for the planet Lark, which will make most of the water, if not all, in Goche clear. Doing nano filtration plant. Now, the nine hundred thousand is the match on five ninety-two funds that we just had the signing for. And that is for West Park Drainage, West Park Drive, I think it's called, drainage. Uh, the copper pipes within your current treatment plant need to be replaced. It's for running water and sewer from, you see the pipes out there now, they're running it down Highway ninety, the main. It's to come off of that and run water and sewer through the mall property. And Buck's Road Lift Station, and then there's a, what was it called? San, uh, sanitary sewer in I N I improvement that's in there as well. So that nine hundred thousand is your total match for all of those projects. By doing this, you will free up some of your yearly infrastructure monetization act funds to enable you to do some paving and do some other things, instead of deplating the bond all at once. So that is the point of doing this, and, um, it gets beneficial to you and the city.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Stand up, take your first and last name.
Mark Olson, twenty-five oh four, Robert Highway Drive. Will this affect the water and sewer rates in the future if it's a duty act for that?
No, sir, it's being paid through infrastructure monetization act funds. So basically what that is, is something that led us later started about five years ago, and it took it a while to get up to where your, the cities were getting a hundred percent. But it's basically from internet sales, and they have a complicated formula to figure out how much you get. But basically, we're up to a hundred percent of getting what we get. So all of this bond will be paid for out of the yearly payment that can be made out of those infrastructure monetization act funds, not water and sewer.
Mr. Truitt, do you have something on this item? Any? Any other public comment on business agenda item number four?
I just have a question.
Okay, take your first and last name, Ms. Moore.
Ellen Malone.
Address?
Thirteen thirty, Goche Drive.
Okay.
And I was just wondering, this, this money is going to go on Martin Bluff, um, where we, right before we get the Hippie Field Drive, they, they're digging down in the sewer and, and it's taken months, a couple of months now. I don't know what's going on there, but there's a station. There's a water treatment, is that something different?
She's talking about a legislation.
Is that gonna include some?
Yeah, that's, that, the, the water station improvements are being done through Lark funds right now. That's probably what you're talking about, is they're working on the water station. This is a water treatment plant to make the water clear and it'll be brown and blue. So that's at Lark, the Lark well is where that would be.
Okay, that's it, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Okay. Do we have, um, a motion to approve the resolution declaring the city's intention to issue a combined water and sewer city revenue bond, B, issue and sell the city revenue bond to the Mississippi Development Bank, and/or C, enter into the loan with Mississippi Development Bank to borrow money from the bank, all in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed five million and three hundred dollars?
So moved.
Three hundred thousand, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Your motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George.
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Uh, yes, so it said that issuing and sell the city revenue bonds. So are we, you mean that we're selling a bond like it's a, is one of the bonds that's already, um, in effect or something?
No, sir, when you issue bonds, municipal bonds, then they're sold. That's how you, they're sold, and that's how you get the.
Okay, I got you, I got you, I got you now. Uh, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
The Lark well, you got any estimate on when?
Well, of that, of the other one, it's already been designed. You know, the Corps, of course, is building it, but the Lark is different in that it has the design that's been started. So they're gonna start the design, and I don't know, that'll probably take nine months.
Who's doing it?
Wagon, the same one that designed this.
Wagon is doing the design.
They're doing the design, and then, once that's completed, then you'll go out and do it. The difference here, though, is somebody else is not building this for you. You're doing it and getting reimbursed, so, from EPA, so it's a lot simpler process. It's all construction.
And the Corps, the Corps is not involved in this one?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman College?
I have no comments.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes, the Lark plant, has the design cost been figured into this?
Yes, the design cost is in what I said you were sure.
Do we know what that is?
Yeah, it was told in the budget meeting, I don't, that we were presented at the budget workshop.
And it includes the design and the R P R in the, if, I'll have to bring the contract to you anyway, so it'll be all sent out in there, whatever it is.
And you say it may be nine months on the design?
I'm just estimating, I don't know how long it'll take. But I mean, they've already designed one, I mean, I don't probably, I don't know if I'm close to buying it, but.
Now, they should be able to design it a lot quicker, because it's gonna be a smaller plant and a smaller building and all that stuff.
I would think so too, uh, but after the design, we're ready to go?
Once it's designed, or looked together, bid package, you know, you'll have to bid it. I don't know, they may do it the same way where you bid the skids separate from the building that houses it, I'm not sure. But once it's bid and you award the bids, then you, it's like any other contract you do. You're overseeing the contract, and you just apply for reimbursement through EPA. It doesn't work like June nineteen at the Corps where you're just a third party beneficiary in their bidding. So it should go much quicker than what.
I hope it does, because we could be another two million dollars in a year.
Plus, when, you know, your timeframe of the contract is a bit longer than something like the Corps than they are just for you. So, you know, my guess is that, I'm just guessing here, I'm Hunter Arnold, I'm telling you more in detail, but my guess is that maybe in two years, you might have a completed plant.
Well, I sure hope so. That's all I'm holding to it.
Yeah, I was.
Councilman Eldon?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there's a guest minute time issue, just.
And I can give it Hunter Arnold, if you were more detailed timeline.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Um, I just wanna thank, um, Steve Pittman with Government Consultants here. Um, for our citizens who don't know, um, Mr. Pittman is our financial consultant for the city of Goche, and he works well with Ms. Shantsey and Ms. Montgomery and our staff. And I just wanna, um, thank you for your hard work to help us, um, in Goche, and also Lindsey Ray with Raymond James for her partnership and always looking out and sending us updates, um, ways for us to utilize some of our money and free up money to continue to do projects and continue to have things going on in the city during tight times, and also having clear audits. So we appreciate y'all's hard work. We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman, I mean, a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Resolution to hire required legal counsel and an independent registered municipal advisor in connection with the financing of certain capital improvements for the city of Goche and for related purposes, by Ms. Shantsey.
Yes, this basically hires your necessary legal counsel and your financial consultant that's necessary for the bond. They work with us year round for, you know, charge city thing, to try and help us do things. So I, um, this particular thing is just basically hiring everything you need to get it done.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution of the mayor and council to hire required legal counsel and an independent registered municipal advisor in connection with the financing of certain capital improvements for the city of Goche and for related purposes?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman George.
Uh, Steve, you did a great job, and over the years that I've been up here, it's been a privilege to work with you guys and have Paul and the staff work with you, and, you know, we enjoy your efforts and Jackson and everything that you do. And I have full confidence in every decision you guys have proposed to us, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
Diddle Cameron.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Eldon?
No comment.
I echo what I said earlier, Mr. Pittman, and thank you, and, um, y'all's team. We got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat?
Nope, this is Gordon.
I mean, Gordon, I'm sorry, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number six. How did that change that all right? Approval of the docket of claims. This top presentation was by Ms. Montgomery, and they were provided to you online, um, and to us online, and that is the presentation. Do we have any public comments on the docket of claims? None, do we have a motion by council?
I'll make a motion, we approve the docket of claims by that all entries are on a true, correct, properly entered, not fraud.
We got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. Does any of the council members wanna pull one? None, nobody wants to pull one. One, approval of the minutes from the recess council meeting held August the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and budget work session held up August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Two, approval of water and sewer adjustments for September twenty twenty-four in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Three, authorization to accept monetary donations for the city of Goche's cruising through the decades event. Four, approval of the agreement between the city of Goche and unphased show and ban. Five, authorization to submit a letter to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors recommending the appointment of. the appointment of Chief David Bever to the Jackson County nine-one-one commission. Six, authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding with Jackson County for housing municipal inmates. Seven, authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding, an MOU with the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security to accept funding for the Goche Fire Department. Eight, authorization to negotiate with Seymour Engineering for professional engineering services related to Hickory Hill Sewer rehabilitation project. Nine, approval of supplemental agreement number five for the Martin Bluff Roadway Improvements Project. Ten, acceptance of the certificate of substantial completion for the Shepherd State Park RV Expansion Project. Do we have a motion to approve one through ten?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. That brings us to our citizen comments, you come to the front, you have state your first, last name and address, and you have three minutes. When you get to one minute left, Councilman College will hold up number one, and when your one minute's ended, you can sit down and we'll be glad to speak to you after the meeting if you'd like to speak with us. One, Tom Powell.
Can you state my address?
First, last name and your address.
Seven, uh, seven zero two four Martin Bluff Road, Goche. Has my time started yet?
It sure has.
Thank you. So my question to you is, since I came to present my issue of having a thirty-four thousand gallon consumption rate, what have you guys done on your end to try to find out where that water went to? Anybody?
We're not asking, just, you got your three minutes, or if we answer, you're gonna take away from your three minutes. Roll with your statement.
Fine, I'll ask my questions. There's a plumbing report, no leaks, no pipes leaking, no water damage, nothing, zero. It's exactly what I told you when I was here before, we pressure checked the house, everything was consistent about it. So then in my research, you guys know about your lawsuit for sixteen million dollars? Yep, y'all know, yep. Well, it's really interesting when you read through this, because exactly why you guys were suing is what happened to me. Now, my question, and again, I hope you can answer it, and even the water company, I wish you could answer it, did you leave the bad meters in there and just think that I wouldn't find this? Think about it. Pretty ridiculous. Here's another one, Ocean Springs, I got friends over there, they pay half of what I pay. I got friends in Biloxi, they pay half of what I pay. Then the other thing that I found out is this JCU thing, they don't pay it.
Oh, yes, they do. Absolute one hundred percent. Hold on, let's, hold on, let's let him finish.
JCU pays.
Last but not least, I guess, you got a, you got a three point six million dollar grant coming in, so you guys, it sounds like you guys are pretty flushed with money. I guess my question really remains, where does this lawsuit, this lawsuit's been going on for ten years, ten years. You guys might not have been involved in it, but that's what this says, so, that's all I got.
Have a good night, thank you, we'll be glad to reach out to you.
No, please, please answer my questions.
Please respond to our city manager and do what she asked of you in your meeting with the.
You're the boss?
She's the boss in our former government, and she, Mr. Powell, told you.
It's her.
And we, she.
In your former government.
It's my turn to speak, Mr. Powell, or you can exit nicely out the back door.
You know what, let's exit nicely, because you're not answering my questions.
Sheila Coleman, have a good night. Sheila Coleman.
Great.
I am, because we don't act like that in public meetings in Goche, Mississippi. No, we're nice, we respect each other.
She's over twenty-seven, twenty, Callegro, most of it. I'm here with an announcement and an request. New Era Missionary Baptist Church in conjunction with Corps are hosting a voter registration drive on September seventh at nine thirty AM, and we're also hosting Ingalls Job Fair on the same day, where you can come in and fill out the application. New Era has been, New Era Missionary Baptist Church has been a consistent presence in Goche, before it was Goche. New Era has served as a conduit between city government and the community for a hundred and thirty-eight years, and continues to serve by helping to host these type of events. I'm requesting to have this information shared on the city's Facebook page and website so that we might reach more people in the city and in the community. I can't figure out how to get it to the Facebook page, I've tried, but I've actually put it in comments, who, or you, so here. Those are the two flyers, Ingalls is wanting to come out and they're gonna be hiring, and we're gonna do voter registration, there's also some other things you can do to be checked.
What time?
Uh, nine thirty AM to one thirty, and that's at seven fifteen, high we ninety, in Goche, Mississippi, where Dr. Reverend Blanks is our pastor, and, uh, as usual, New Era is stepping up to get these people registered. If you know any high school students that will be eighteen before the hundred fifth, they can register, so they can vote. I don't know if the school still does it, they used to take it to the register, okay, so, but it's open to everybody, so please come out.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
I have a question.
Yes?
The, when you say you're gonna, Ingalls are gonna be there, are they gonna be there to assist people in doing online applications?
They're gonna, yes, sir, they're gonna be there doing applications, and I do believe they're gonna be actually hiring, from what I understand, they usually hire, and if you come in for your drug tests and this type of thing.
Well, if you, if you're doing an application, then they'll call you back.
Yes.
Maybe, depending on what you apply for, for instance, if you apply for sheet metal, they'll send you to a six weeks class.
Right.
They pay you seventeen dollars a mile while you're in that class, and when you finish that class, you go to like twenty-three, twenty-four dollars a mile. So it's a good opportunity for people to.
Please, let everybody know, if he shares it to the city, then you can share.
Everything is online for Ingalls, yeah.
So, they'll have confusion, there's also some other things you can do for the voter registration, you can check your voter status, that type of thing, and see, make sure that you are registered, where you, where your voting station is, and the Corps will handle and all that, and, uh, come out.
Would there be any other job?
Uh, Cedar River Hospital, that's contacted me today, and they tried to find someone to send out, send out also, accept applications, but I'll make sure, if you're friends with New Era Missionary Baptist Church, it'll be on our Facebook page.
That's already on there, you just gotta go share. Thank you, Ms. Coleman, and thank you and Reverend Blanks and your congregation that are here, 'cause I see several of your members here for y'all's hard work and contribution to Goche. Ms. Delamore?
Delamore, nineteen twenty, what's that, wait, my apologies, my phone just going off, I thought it was awkward, that's what happens when you get, when your age reaches. Okay, Alex, first of all, you, uh, case of fun, you are an independent person, and you was out there, socialized with a lot of Democrats, you socialized with Republicans, that's the type of people we need in government, who can cross each line and bring people together. It was a great turnout Saturday, I really enjoyed it, I just said, look at this man, he is an independent, I just wanna point you out on that.
Thank you.
You know, and you guys are doing a great job in the city, you know, with the Rock, we're doing well, I guess I must have missed that five, so, you know, with that man, was you been sued, has Russ been sued in that suit?
Russ has what?
No, he's not.
But, but anyway, I just want to commend you seriously for the way you reach across party lines, you don't care about the party affiliation, you care about the citizen of Goche, and I need you to sprinkle that through a lot of more people out there.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, I appreciate those comments. Mr. Charles Moore?
My name is Charles Moore, live in eighteen twenty, West Lake Park, in Goche, Mississippi. I'm still on West about the time, I gotta stay on, I know you probably retired next, you know.
June the thirtieth, next year.
Next year, okay, anyway, that, first of all, I got a ditch behind, behind my next door to my neighbor, running behind my house, I wanted to get it to be cleaned out of anything, had oak tree, like, sixty, going down.
What streets is the ditch here? What street is the ditch here?
Westgate Park.
Westgate Park, they're writing it down, Mr. Moore, so the public works, Ms. Moore gonna get with you either after the meeting or she'll contact you, but she's right back here writing it down right now.
Okay, then, I would, it sounds good.
Thank you.
So we enjoyed y'all, uh, you're good, you're good.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our council comments. We start with Councilman George, because it's the first meeting of the month.
I have no comments.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, so, uh, one, that was, I enjoyed the, uh, the Democrats coming out, um, this, Labor Day, that was fun, uh, we, we had a blast, more of like a party scene versus just being, uh, just sitting there talking and things like, we got the opportunity to enjoy one another and communicate with one another. So, one of the things I have, and I just wanna really just put this so that it can be on the minutes, so, the, when, when I came on board, I fought for everything that we achieved, I had to fight for it, it wasn't no, just, um, hey, they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, you're doing a great job, we're gonna help you and we're gonna assist you in what you're doing, I had to fight for it. None of this is given. If you see anything done in the South Side, oh, definitely, it was a struggle getting there. I reached out to people to get funds, I did not receive them, and I'd like to receive this, just make sure that we tidy up everything that is done in our community. So I have, um, and also, you know, you see the development of Bayco Park, you see the change in our community, you see the violence reduced, you see our community just, just the same as anyone else's community, they can't say, oh, the South Side is this, the South Side is the bad side, that's over, because the work has been put in, so that's over, we, we can't talk about that anymore. Now we gotta move on to what our future is right now, that's what we gotta move on to. And, um, so if there's funds out there for our South Side, give it to us, we're taxpayers, we pay our taxes like anybody else, and since I've been a councilman, everything has been black and white, and literally, you know, literally been black and white, you had to fight for something for African-American community, if you want something in there, you gotta fight for it, it's not gonna be given to you if you get on this council board, it's not, and that's anywhere in the state of Mississippi, you not gonna get it just without a fight, you're gonna have to, you gotta have to prepare to, um, to jeopardize your job, if you work in a job, you gotta be prepared to jeopardize everything that you have, to sacrifice yourself, to fight for a community like this. So, these are the sacrifices that were made, and, you know, we had, just when she was speaking about, um, uh, New Era Baptist Church, that community been there for God knows how long, and we still haven't got any development for Frazier Park. That park deserved that development, the drainage deserved that development, we got a, uh, Old Spanish Trail, that area, it, it's been like that since I was a little boy, and, you know, now that they're developing the highway, um, and I'm actually trying to push that, that, for that develop, for that to be rectified, um, the, now that there's more development on the highway, there's more water being pushed down into that community. And so, these changes need to take place, the mindset need to take, need to change in Mississippi, so that when we ask for things, it don't take years to get it. Now, I know it takes years to fight for stuff, but I'm saying, we ain't talking about like three, four years, we talking about twenty, thirty, forty years, we talking about as long as the city been a city. So, those are the things I just wanted to address, and, you know, just to make sure it was on the record, uh, that we gotta start becoming one Mississippi if we don't want to include everybody's vote, and ask for everybody's vote, you need to become a Mississippi where you do human rights versus just rights for someone, other than everybody. So you gotta do human rights, and that way everybody be included. So I just wanted to put that on the record, you know, I ain't wanna just put a damp on everybody's spirit, I'm hoping I presented that in a more professional way, that you would not take it the wrong way, but I have to present it because it's important, it is very important that these things be recognized, and I have no, just, nothing else to say.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna address some of the comments from the first gentleman that spoke, Mr. Powell. A lot of it is inaccurate information, first of all, JCUA, every municipality on this coast, on the, in Jackson County, that's Moss Point, Passagula, Goche, Ocean Springs, and West Jackson County Utility District, all pay wastewater sewer fees to JCUA. Some of these other municipalities also purchase water from JCUA, in which case they have additional costs, but every municipality in Jackson County has to pay wastewater sewer treatment fees to JCUA. That's a gift, that's absolutely what I'm thinking given. Two, litigation, yes, we have been in litigation with Mueller for several years now, um, we know we have some bad meters, we changed meters out, in the case of this gentleman here, we actually put two meters on there to verify the meter was accurately reading, it is accurately reading. Our city's staff have been working with this gentleman, and as you saw how he presented here, it's not going well on his side, and I'm not gonna say why or how, but it's just not going for some reason. And two, the grant he, three, the grant he referenced is not for the water meters, that grant is part of our water treatment plant, our clarification plant, that cannot be used to change out meters, that's used strictly for allocated to the nano filtration plants that we are building in Goche. Other than that, I thank our staff for all their hard diligent work, that's all our staff, you do a great job, you make your city proud, and I'm proud to be able to work with y'all every day, day in and day out, every day, that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
I don't know where to start. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, sir.
I don't remember this fight you're talking about, but I do remember this entire council going to Jackson, Mississippi and securing, I believe it was, we spent two point one million on Bayco Park?
We issued a bond for that, Councilman Anderson, Jackson never gave, we never really did state funds.
Well, we got some state funds.
The, the, Bayco was done with a bond that we issued, a three million dollar bond, one point five was spent on Bayco, and one point five was spent on the site work out of Town Commons, and then supervisors actually kicked in four hundred thousand to do some additional stuff out there, and then later, you spent, I can't remember the schedule, I think it was almost two hundred thousand building that outdoor basketball court.
Yeah, yeah, so total at Bayco Park was over one point five million? Yeah, it was around two million, I think.
Yeah, by the time you got out of it.
Yeah, that's what I just said, you said, but anyway, let me finish, that's what I'm talking about.
Hey, we're not gonna, you just stated your comments?
I'm going to.
Councilman Anderson, I mean, Jackson already stated his, and then we'll move on?
Yeah, and well, anyway, we spent nearly two million dollars at Bayco Park, but I don't remember the fight, I remember us helping you, and I remember all of us voting for Bayco Park, and I love Bayco Park, my son spent his entire youth career down here playing baseball and soccer and whatnot, I don't have a thing against Bayco Park, but we all supported you in that, and I don't remember this fight you're talking about.
I'm talking about the state.
There was no fight.
He's not talking about. He's not referencing you, Councilman Anderson, or else he's just.
I'm asking him, not you, Larry. I'm asking him, not you, Mayor, I'm asking him, I don't remember any fight, I thought it all went, and we, 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 we got that Bayco Park done really fast compared to what it's taken to get Martin Bluff Road built, and what it's taken to get our water clarification plant built. You got, we got money for Bayco Park like that compared to this, but that was not a fight.
What about Frazier Park?
Miss Moore, don't, don't.
Frazier Park, we put air-condition bathrooms down there at Frazier Park, I don't know what else we done, I know we put air-condition restrooms down there, but.
Hold on, no.
Well, you're right, we gotta do some more.
Councilman Anderson, state your comments, and let's move the meeting forward, we're not gonna argue with citizens.
I just wanted Councilman Jackson to understand that there was not a fight between this council on that, it was all, hundred percent, we all went for it.
Next.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Elbin, I mean, y'all can argue outside.
You need to let them argue.
Councilman Elbin. I run the meeting, I'm elected to chair and run the meeting, not you, Councilman Anderson. Go ahead, Councilman Elbin.
On this topic, I hope we can work as a team to help develop some, uh, some of these projects up in Hickory Hills, uh, and let's balance the city out a little bit. Also, I'd like to thank all the employees, every single one of them, each, that worked each day to make this city run, uh, we couldn't do it without you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elbin. Um, I just wanna thank, um, the organization who hosted a wonderful Labor Day, and I posted on my social media post, Happy Labor Day to all of the city employees and all American workers, because that's what keeps this world going. And I thank you all, and I hope y'all all had a blessed day, and to the ones that had to work, we did not forget about you and what you do either. So, I thank everybody. Ms. Shancy, I just wanna give you kudos on an awesome, um, budget presentation, and I ask that us citizens remember some of our fellow cities throughout the state of Mississippi that are struggling right now and are having hard times with their budget, and they're not as blessed as us, and they face a lot of challenges. So please remember them and their employees in your thoughts and prayers. No, things are not perfect in Goche, they're not perfect anywhere, but we all give our time to continue to grow Goche, and us work together to grow Goche, and that's what we will continue to do in Goche. It's not about one person, it's not about one community, it is about all of Goche. We have done our best to give to recreation. When I was first elected councilman, recreation was desolate in this city, we had no recreation. We worked hard to get it where it is today, and we've had to fight to get people back to participate in our programs, and I feel our staff has done a great job doing it. Yes, every part in Goche needs revitalized, but unfortunately, the money tree, and then if y'all found it, y'all surely let me know, 'cause I'll come help pick the money for the citizens of Goche to continue to have more. But we have to all list our projects, and we just got to keep fighting. We have the colored schoolhouse that's been on board since I was first councilman, we're still trying to get funding for, and it's a historic marker, so you have to have certain guidelines, and it's so costly to restore that small little building, but one day, it will get completed, I can assure you, but it just takes time. And I ask that everybody be patient with each other, let's all work together, because it's all about one Goche, not just one area or one neighborhood, because we all deserve great things. Um, and thank you again, Ms. Shancy and your staff, I can appreciate y'all enough. Also, I got to ask the board, Mr. Story, the athletic director for the PGSD School District, um, didn't realize that some of them were gonna request some fireworks earlier than he anticipated, so did not meet our deadline requirement, but as always, we're committed to the future of our youth here in Goche. So we're gonna, I need to ask y'all if y'all would mind voting to approve a fireworks show for selected pre-game and post-game football season games on September the thirteenth, October the eighteenth, November the seventh, and potential playoff games on November the fifteenth, November the twenty-second, November the twenty-ninth.
Mayor, if we could, before the motion's made, get Chief Latches, um, weigh in on its.
Pending, no burn, pending, we're not in a burn ban, is what the permit.
And, but, they, I talked to them today about sprinkler, sprinkler in the field.
It's in the order. They only put all that in that order, is that correct?
Yeah, it's in, okay, it's in the order. Basically, the fireworks show within, the same thing we've always told them, is what's in the order. Basically, have water hose, et cetera, water the line, that kind of stuff. Okay. Any other, um, questions about that? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I think a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Anderson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I also wanna recognize that guest here this evening, we have our, one of our school board members in the back, Mr. Matt Johnson, who represents you on the Pascal Goche School Board.
Thank you. I promise I didn't trouble the fireworks.
Um, and last but not least, um, I echo what Councilman College says, and that, as a board, we cannot discuss per people's personal utility deals with the citizens, that is their private business. But I can assure you, there's two sides to every story, and we have a process to follow, just like I told WLOX. The process is if you go to the utility department and you don't get the answer you want, then you go to Ms. Shancy, then if you don't get the answer, you come here, but then we'll have to work with Ms. Shancy, or send you back to her with us going and trying to resolve your problem. And if it can't get resolved, we can also get our lovely city attorney, Mr. Danos, involved over here.
Lovely.
But I can tell you, we work with the citizens, and I can tell you that his water meter is legit. What might have happened? Who knows? Anything could have happened to the water thing. We don't know that, but there's a process he could follow and still get an adjustment, but he will not work with our city staff here to follow the next process to get his adjustment that he could qualify for. So unfortunately, we are trying to work with Mr. Powell, and unfortunately, we have rules and state statutes that we have to follow, we just cannot go writing off people's water bill. And we're not gonna do that and get a bad audit on our audit report, so we're gonna follow the Mississippi state statute. So, once again, he can come back and do what he has not finished with Ms. Shancy, and we will work with him, but that's how I'm gonna leave, um, that statement, and you don't have to act unprofessional when you come to our meeting. And yes, we're aware of a lawsuit, it's been on every news media with the meters, and if your meter, it, it's not malfunctioning, because the utility department would have already contacted you, because that's why we're manually reading readers right now, 'cause that is the component that is broken on the meters. If it's something else, we have replaced those meters. So, the meter, unfortunately, just hiccoughed one time, and it hadn't hiccoughed again, 'cause we're back to normal usage, so, what happened, nobody knows, only the man upstairs. Um, Ms. Shancy, you have anything tonight? Thank you. Ms. Montgomery, you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to point out that on page twenty of the docket is the September, which is payment to the JCUA for two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. That is the twelfth and final payment for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery, 'cause we do pay that group that people don't think we pay. Um, okay, anything else you would like to say about that?
Glad that the budget's up.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Danos, anything? The lovely Mr. Danos. Glad he could join us this evening. Do we have a motion to recess until September the tenth, twenty-twenty-four at six PM? So I repeat, six PM, because it's gonna be the adoption of the budget next Tuesday, not a normal council meeting for us.
So would it be?
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gillett, all in favor? Motion carries, we're recessed.